I don't blame you.
I was.
All right, but it was.
I'll vote for call me to order the date six P M. I have a vote on seven minute of four.
Mike Wagner.
Here.
Cindy Bytine here. Gary Demaskey.
Here.
James Carman.
And.
Mary Beth Shaw.
Here.
Matt Crowe.
All right, I have proof of posting on Stanford. I'd like to be in.
To certify the United States of America and to the government for which it stands. Or nation, hundred and fifty. And the result with the order being that's.
You're on to one point five, which is. You vote for that for tonight.
So who?
Second.
Anybody have any questions about it? Okay, and then Mike.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Dale.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Okay, we are on to two point one, which is the approval of the Board of Education meeting minutes from August twenty fourth of twenty twenty.
Seven.
Anybody have any changes or comments about the meeting minutes? There are none. Mike.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. We are on to two point two, which is the approval of the payroll accruals slash disbursements.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll accruals and disbursements.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Give you a couple of seconds to come over if you haven't already. Any question? There are none. Mike.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Matt. I will vote yes as well. We're on to three point one, public input. No public input, so we will go to four point one, which is board president. Just wanted to say thank you guys all for our last meeting. I know it was a little bit of controversial topic and we all had to kind of maybe get out of our comfort zone and kind of express how we felt. And in the end, like I said, a decision had to be made. We made the decision and now, you know, we'll move forward and give this all the support that we can. All right, and it sounds like it's been a good couple of weeks of school and my kids are pretty happy with things. They know what they're doing. They know what they have to do, so pretty happy with that. And we have new staff here tonight. Thank you guys for coming. And that's all I got. So we're on to. The administration reports slash Jordan.
Not going to give a presentation or do reports at this point like we've done now since July. The administration put together just kind of reopening slash operational planning, as we're calling it now, a presentation, which we'll give a little bit later in the meeting. So we will just move right on to our committee structure. Actually, it's our innovation and then our committee structure, so.
All right, thank you, Jordan. So we're going to skip to five point one, which is the announcement of a three hundred dollar technology donation from Damien and Dayton Morgan.
Just like to publicly thank people, obviously, if they donate things to the district, our policy says any donations above five hundred need to be approved. Anything below that's just acknowledgement of, so I just want to acknowledge that donation and publicly say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item number six, which is our committee discussion slash information and our focus points. The first one is six point two, which is employee relations.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
I would say this is a good one to get to see new people.
Yes, absolutely. So we have some new staff members that have joined us tonight, so I know Dale prepped them and got them ready. This is a very strenuous experience, so we appreciate you being here. No, it's not, just relax.
Usually we have food and refreshments, so what a bummer.
You can come back next year for the second go around. We'll have food that we can all enjoy together, so.
But we'll still accept the song you're going to sing.
I don't know if there's anything you wanted to say, Dale, before we turn it over to this? No, it's been a great start to the school year. We had a couple of good days prior to the start of school. Lot of energy coming through this group, lot of experience, you know, excited to have them join the team just overall. So I think our goal tonight is if we could just go around the room and each of you just take a moment and introduce yourself, any little tidbit that you want to share with the board. I think they'd appreciate that. Obviously, tell them your position in the school district and maybe any kind of experience that you have. So, Jeff, you want to start for us?
Hi, Debbie Schmidt. I am the mental health student support specialist. I'm located primarily here at the middle high school, but it's a district wide position. And I come with twenty years of school counseling experience, primarily at the high school level. Three years, I was part time at the middle school, a virtual school, and for four years I was in an elementary school.
Lindsay, you want to go next?
Sure. Lindsay Martin, elementary school counselor. And I have been working at school counseling mostly in K through twelve positions in our rural schools for the last seven years. Me and my family just moved across planes, but I was loving it here. I grew up in Lowdive, so I'm kind of coming back home, I say, back in my neighborhood, so glad to be here.
Cindy Clark, first grade. I recently just got married and moved from Michigan. Prior to moving over the summer, I taught first grade in Grand Ledge, Michigan for two years. Yeah, excited to be here.
You're a buyer and teaching fifth grade at Maisel. I just recently graduated from the University of Wisconsin-O'shaght, so it's my first teaching job. I'm very excited. I student taught in a rural community, so it's awesome to be back in one. And yeah, it's going to be a great year, that's it.
Mackenzie Dees, this is, I'm the new high school, middle school English teacher. This is my sixth year teaching. I actually did my student teaching long term stuff here for Kathy Nag back in the day, so I'm excited to be back. I've been at Jamesville Parker for the last five years.
I'm Jamie Steffen. I'm a middle school science teacher here, so I'm seventh and eighth graders this year. This is also my first year teaching. I graduated from U W White Water, and I went back as a postdoc for teaching certification. So I just finished that in spring as well. I student taught in Elkhorn, Wisconsin, at the high school there, and I also did some work at Lake Geneva Middle School. I'm from that area, so just moved to Middleton like a month ago. So excited to be here.
Well, thanks for coming today, you guys, and I'm going to put the board on the spot. If you guys, can we just go around and if you would, just introduce yourself to them as well, because they see or hear your name and it's nice to put in, I know you have your name changed, but Mike, if you just.
I'm Mike Wagner. I got, I live in the town of Black Earth. I have two kids. One is a seventh grader and one is a sophomore in the night school this year.
And I'm Cindy Bytine. I live in Maisel, Maine, the town of Maisel, and I have one daughter. She's a junior.
I'm James Carman. I live in the little river Maisel. I have a daughter that just graduated. I have someone that's in seventh, or someone's a freshman this year, and my daughter Annie is in seventh grade.
Mary Beth Shaw, I'm a former school nurse, that's my link to the school here. I now own a restaurant in downtown Maisel and I live in the town of Maisel.
Hi, Gary Demaskey. You live in the town of Black Earth. I've got a couple of granddaughters, one in kindergarten and the other in fifth grade. I think she is in your class. And let me see, a pill in still in business in Lake Geneva? Yeah. That's always a head stop right there. Okay, welcome.
Guys, bar staffs over here. I have a second grader. I am a born and raised Black Earthian and a proud alum, and I just want to welcome you all. I can't even imagine the undertaking, even as the newbies and undertaking the climate that we're in, but I've heard great things already, so welcome.
My name is Matt Crowe. I grew up in Ohio and moved out here for a job and then eventually moved to this area because it reminded me of where I grew up. My dad was a principal at a bunch of different levels. I don't have any kids, but kind of the principal's kid equivalent of a military brat, I mean, it's schools, I guess. So I kind of grew up in a school system. I guess I look to be on the board for that reason, to be involved.
Thank you, guys, for doing that. We have one more item on this, so I told the group that they could sneak out after an appropriate time, so I don't know if there's. Thanks for inviting them to come and glad to have all of you over, so.
Yeah, just real quick, I never could pass up an opportunity with this group. Dale worked to organize a big teacher, you know, in service in August. As a part of that, he allowed the administrative team to come in and just introduce ourselves, let our new staff members introduce themselves, and then Dale and I, the second day, just put together a little presentation, which just kind of turns into Dale and I pontificating about all kinds of things and really our passion and excitement for education. But I just need to share that it was so cool to have that opportunity with this group and just the connection. I don't know any of them, I've never met them before until they were hired here, but just connection that I think I felt, I think they felt as well, just to things we talked about, the culture of the district and how we are here to support each other and work to get better. And I shared the notion of like failing forward, as Barb you mentioned, like a tough start to a school year, and we made some parallels to, we support intelligent risk taking to try to be better, not let's just play it safe all the time and kind of roll with the status quo. So it was really cool to have that conversation and to see how this group connected kind of with that mindset. And much like I think you mentioned as well, hearing things from parents and colleagues and others talking about what a great addition. And really, I think something we've tried really hard in the last couple of years is hiring with, hiring with culture in mind and with the human being in mind, knowing that there's a lot of other things that you can coach and you can learn together. And it's really hard to change the fabric of who a person is, and I think this group is emblematic of that. So very excited to have them. It's been fun to get to know a little bit about them and I look forward to many great things in the years to come, so welcoming. Don't forget a shirt. So if you go left to right from what I'm facing, it's from small to larger sizes over here. Obviously, there's more than enough, if you want to, go ahead. You can have a Monday and a Friday shirt. But please grab a shirt on the way out. We bought these a couple of years ago, just as a thing for our new staff members. They certainly work on a Friday, if you're wondering about like wardrobe, yes, Wisconsin Heights wear is encouraged on Fridays, so feel free to grab one on your way out, and thanks again. If I were you, I'd leave. Just saying.
But you're welcome to stay.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay. That says if you're not obligated to be at the board, you probably have better things to do. Thanks for everyone having a good night.
Becky. Yep, I'm here.
All right, so our second item under here is negotiations with the Federation of Teachers. One of the pieces in the Act Ten world that we've now been in for nine years, believe it or not, is needing to have a posted negotiation piece on an agenda with your federation. And Becky is on Zoom joining us, representing the federation, so I don't know if Mary Beth, if you had any questions for Becky? I'm seeing a head shake, so Becky, do you have any questions or things that you would like to share with the Board of Education?
No, other than we, do you want me to say now that we agree with the bargaining agreement, the collective bargaining agreement for twenty twenty, twenty one?
That is excellent news, so we will vote on that later in the agenda, so I appreciate you stating that right now. As I stated last week when we met, I really appreciate the positive relationship and communication that we have and the openness of the dialogue, so if there's anything else, feel free to chime in. If not, thank you so much for joining us.
Nope, there's nothing else, but I agree, I appreciate the openness that we have in the conversation and the ability to, on a monthly basis, meet and talk and have conversations.
Thank you, appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, well, that looks like it concludes everything that we have to cover under our employee relations. And it does have in here, you know, is there anything else that you guys have to discuss or future?
I don't know, I don't remember the.
All right, well, we move on to six point three, which is our next focal point, which is curriculum.
Sorry, just a little bit off in my head. In the past, we had done like employee forums, like actually invited the teachers in and the staff in to like present ideas, things like that. Is that ever something?
So typically, that was something we have done in the spring.
Oh, in the spring, okay.
That was usually a March to April thing, which clearly we weren't doing last March and April.
Yeah.
As Becky mentioned, we do meet monthly, Cheryl and I schedule a meeting with the group and are very open to feedback and dialogue. But to your question, Cindy, I think that's just another good practice to establish a good working relationship with your faculty, so I think that if times allow for something like that.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we typically wait till the spring because we kind of want them to get them through the school year a little bit, so they can kind of see if there was, they wanted to address. A running agenda item on those monthly meetings is the employee handbook, so we always kind of open that door if they have pieces that they have feedback on or have questions on or clarifications. And then we keep a running list of things that come up from both the teachers group and then from any other groups within the district. And then we did communicate last spring with them via email. Here was the potential items, let us know if you have feedback, so we still kind of engage in the process, albeit in a slightly different way.
Can I wave my hands?
Maybe by that means for a big party.
Well, that'd be nice. We can't even shake their hands.
We're probably.
You know, and to that end, one thing, because we've talked about it and it's played out in multiple situations already, and it's just one of those things where you need to think a little bit differently, because typically, if you have good opportunities to bring together people, district wide, you take advantage of that. Unfortunately, right now, we need to flip the script and like avoid bringing people together, district wide. It's like Maisel needs to stay with their pod, you Black Earth needs to stay with their pod, because it's when you start intermingling, if you have to forbid have a case, and now suddenly you've got an outbreak, and it brings down the whole district. So, yeah, it's been a lot of different thinking than we typically would have.
All right, anybody have anything else for employee relations? Not, let's move on to curriculum and Matt, you're on to that.
I don't, I don't have any specific additions.
Okay, sounds good. So Rachel Elliott, our tech integrator, is joining us on Zoom as well. I hear noise, so that means she's there.
Yep, I'm here.
Hi, Rachel.
You're welcome. Hi.
Go ahead and take it.
What?
I said, go ahead and take over.
Okay, cool. Okay, so I'm just going to go through some updates with you guys, and whoever's controlling can hit next. So just with thinking about the devices for students, so those are the numbers for the middle, high school, Maisel, Black Earth. We distributed a total of like three hundred eighty-two devices. I'm sure that number has gone up, kind of students have been requesting, so we might be a little closer to four hundred. I know we had like a total of six hundred two handout, so we didn't meet that. We were kind of worried at first if we would. And the total number of hotspots distributed to families is sixty-three, and I believe Scott had actually ordered maybe like twenty more as well for families. And so Scott and I just swapping out devices as needed when families or students reach out saying something's not working or kind of just troubleshooting on our end. So that's the devices. And then, so obviously, our biggest kind of tech thing this school year was the adoption and integration of Schoology. And so over the summer, teachers had actually participated in a total of about seven hundred hours of PD development for them. And this is all through an online Schoology course that I had kind of created. In June, we provided them with an optional eight-hour training. And then we actually have eleven staff members throughout the district who did this like master instructor course that was a little more in depth, which was six hours. And then in July to August, we actually used those eight, eight-hour buyout hours for teachers to complete additional Schoology training and then an additional up to eight hours of paid training. So just a lot of hard work and effort went into this for teachers to be prepped, to kind of have this, just be a successful start to the school year with this new platform for our students. And then the first week of school, I also trained the EAs in our school district that only have Schoology, but also have a U Zoom, and they're doing like using that. Or they had to set up Zoom sessions with their students to support them. And then just for those of you who may be not be aware with Schoology, just kind of the transition, so students obviously are using this to submit their work digitally. Every day, they go to Zoom sessions with their teachers, they can use Schoology to review grades, there's discussions, announcements, and I think it's a, Schoology has kind of been really nice in providing feedback to our students on their assignments. And it's also great that they have a nice assessment feature where teachers can create assessments that, they could be multiple choice, they could be short essay. There's also like audio, video that can be included, and teachers can also make things where students have to highlight, so it really has a lot of different like capabilities. And again, for teachers, middle school, high school, we're using Schoology to sync grades with Skyward. Schoology has a neat feature called this workload planning tab, where teachers actually can view student workload across their courses, which is kind of nice for when teachers are planning to give an assessment, they can see how busy a student might be that week with other assignments and courses. And again, just like that feedback piece, and it's really easy to send assignment backs for students, send assignments back for them to resubmit. And then just administrators thinking how they can use it, providing school updates, they can easily share faculty information, send out resources, and also create rooms. And then I'm just going to show you a couple of different course examples, so you can see what these main pages look like. So we have a couple of different examples, second grade, as you can see, a lot of our teachers are using like the merge little bit emoji classrooms, and it's really, it's nice because teachers are able to share those learning targets. They're able to easily organize their class, whether it's weekly, or you can see Mrs. Turberg is organizing hers by grade level. And then moving on to like middle school, high school, again, teachers are, you know, it's kind of nice because they can make their own Schoology page personalized, whether it's just organizing it to folders, making it a little more visual appealing. It's kind of up to them how they want to set that up. I think one of the biggest functionality, functionalities of Schoology that teachers are using is just how they're organizing their course to make it easy for students. They can see the upcoming assignments, they can also see overdue assignments. There is also a calendar that students can look at that will show them all the upcoming assignments as well. And then just on the last slide, I just wanted to show you an example of how Black Earth is using it, so Scott Morris posting like the marketing announcements there. And then to the right, this is just our PD course, and it's going to be open throughout the school year as a resource for teachers. And just remain open and any updates I can post there as well. So, yeah, that's what I have. What questions do you have?
I have a question, Rachel.
Yep.
When you're helping families that are struggling with an internet connection and you are giving them a hotspot, are you physically like driving out to their house and setting up stuff to make sure it all works, or what does that look like?
A lot of the troubleshooting I do is either if parents or students email me and then I just recommend that we do a Zoom call, but obviously, if they don't have the internet, they wouldn't be able to do that. So we have gotten a lot of calls like over the phone, but whenever I have the chance to, I just hop on Zoom with like students to see what troubles they're having or what they're not able to do.
Typically, what that looks like is they'll come in and pick up the hotspot, which is then paired to the device that they have, so that hotspot is paired to like, let's say, the Chromebook that we issued them as well. And then that's what allows them, because it's like, it's like a cellular hotspot, so it's through US Cellular is what most of our free.
So the only connecting, so the hotspots only connect to one device then, they're specifically set up for, so parents can use them to.
Yes.
Download everything else on there, basically use internet free, basically?
Correct, they're paired with the school issued device.
Well, yeah, that was part of what I was thinking, and I was also thinking sixty-three hotspots is a lot of her job, just driving around troubleshooting everyone.
That was my question, how much of your time are you spending on connectivity issues versus the Schoolologies?
Did you hear that, Rach? How much time are you guys spending on connectivity issues, so kind of that piece versus the software and the Schoology piece?
I think last week, we, or like the, I'm sorry, my weeks are getting mixed up. Speaker's call, we spent kind of a lot of time just with like if it's paired correctly, but I would say maybe that was like less than ten families who received a hotspot. And some things are like, like the audio, you know, the Chromebook, we just set up a time for the parent or student to come in and get a different device. But a majority of my time is just spent with teachers, kind of one-on-one coaching with them or supporting them quickly, whether through an email or just hopping, going into their room to help manage whatever is happening with Schoology, so. I'm kind of curious the feedback from the staff as far as how, that's, I know it's kind of early on and they're kind of jumping into them things, but I know we, this undertaking of this kind of learning has been in a discussion and works for quite some time, and now that it's a thing, you know, what's, what's kind of the feedback as far as having it available to them?
Rach, could you hear that? Is that something that you think based on your?
I heard a little bit, just not the main question.
So kind of from working with staff members, you know, whether it's one-on-one or the whole group type stuff, what type of feedback or vibe are you getting from our staff members regarding the implementation of Schoology?
Honestly, I think overall it's pretty positive, especially just the fact that a lot of, I mean, every staff member was very familiar with Google, and a lot of their assignments are easily integrated into Schoology, so that wasn't a big switch. I think the first couple of weeks, we've kind of learned some, like about some little hiccups and just how to problem solve that. But overall, I think the feedback has been pretty positive with the schedule and, you know, those expectations that we set up for students and teachers, I think has been extremely helpful as well.
Rachel, just, do you have a question?
I do.
Okay, just one, Rachel, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, hey, this is Gary. One other thing, are we continuing to pursue also any kind of special programming through like CenturyLink, TDS, Charter? As far as communications or internet access?
Oh, what was that last part?
As far as internet access for families?
So Scott attends usually the like, or he was attending this week, the like tech session for all of these like IT people in the state of Wisconsin. And I believe that like our website somewhere that Scott had made like a help desk for families, just with an internet to make that available for them. I think moving forward to obviously with like all the hotspots, there are different programs that we, I think we just need to be able to share that in a better way to families. there are different programs that we, I think we just need to be able to share that in a better way to families. If that answered that question?
Yeah, it does.
I guess to that end, Gary, I'll chime in on that one because yes, we have investigated Mary Jane. My very media specialist has gotten involved and Liz has gotten involved with her a little bit. She's done some research on what other programs or things are available because there are programs through like Spectrum is an easy one where they'll actually work with districts and allow you to purchase basically on behalf of a family to get them better access because the hotspots being cellular don't always get a great signal either. So that's another issue. And there was just information that actually came out today regarding dollars available at state level that we could tap into. So that then spurred a couple of emails. So I think as we continue to troubleshoot with individual families, that'll become a more and more viable option, particularly if they live in a place that has access to those options.
I've got a question. I know the middle school and high school kids are expected to be up and on schedule, right? So it seems to me last spring we were having some issues with kids who couldn't stay at home. Their parents either had to go to work or whatever. Do the elementary teachers require a schedule or can the kids log in whenever they want to? Like they have to go to grandma's house or whatever or they don't have access right away or run into any of those kind of problems?
So Black Earth and Maiso are also on a set Zoom schedule. Obviously incorporating breaks for the younger students. But teachers are also recording like their main content lessons for students to go in and watch at another time.
Good.
So both, I would say the way I describe it like simple terms, it's live but they're on demand as well.
I think this is a good question. Does anyone come across any families that have had issues or needed to talk about like, well, we can't be there at eight-thirty. I don't want my kid to be marked absent.
Teachers have just worked with parents and families and figure out as good as I worked for them. I mean, that's, that's been my experience. I mean, you just got to work with them and that gets the access that they need and then the tools that they need. So that hasn't been a huge, huge problem at all. Anything else for Rachel?
No, just thanks for all the work you're doing Rachel.
Yeah, thank you.
Working very hard and this is kind of, we always say uncharted territory, but you guys certainly have had to take on extra responsibilities that you probably did not consider when you started in this role. So we appreciate it.
You're welcome. I love it and I obviously continue to learn your things too. So it's actually kind of fun for me, so.
You remember a couple of years ago when we hired you for this job, we talked about being the stopgap when we hit a pandemic and that you were going to be the one that helped us get through everything. That was right in the job description.
And it all worked out well.
Other tests as a side.
Yeah, we appreciate it Rachel. All joking aside, I think you know this at this point, but you've done a great job and we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you Rachel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, you too. Bye-bye.
All right, well, it's like there's, can I make anything else as far as item, pretend item number one there?
I just would say to the board, I mean, when you see staff members and teachers, sometimes on purpose, sometimes by accident, when you do, give them a little pat on the back and a kudos. And we've all been trying to do that administratively as well because when you saw that number of like $700, they did a great job. We had a district leadership team meeting today and stated that to that group. When I met with the Federation last week, stated it to that group. People have stepped up and got out of their comfort zone and have really pushed hard. We know it's not perfect, but we also know it's a lot better and people are kind of taking it out of the can-do attitude. So if you see a teacher, people have had a bad.
Well, from afar.
Yeah, yeah. Elbow home. I guess that's a good thing.
All right, well, we'll move on to number two, which is the admin team will share updates on the startup, the enhanced online.
Dive right in here and keep us moving. Been doing this obviously for a while now. Updates, not going to have to click on them necessarily, but since we met last time, it feels like a while. It's been already, that was just a few weeks ago, so Emergency Order Nine came out, then it was updated. The opening metrics for Dane County are still there. They have not changed. The Dane County snapshot, which we've been looking at for about a month or two now as well. If you see three B, the 14-day case average in Dane County rose to 94. A week ago it was 45. A lot of that is attributed to the UW. They talked about approximately 71% of the new cases can be tied back to the UW. The other piece that public health keeps telling us is it's important for us, even in offline places in the county, to remember that those kids don't live in bubbles and we don't usually live in bubbles either. So we travel generally places to shop and to get things. They travel places to shop and to get things. We have community members that are faculty at UW. We have families and students that go to UW. So the notion that it's like you can't get here is kind of, I think, foolish because it can. So it's important to not just dismiss those numbers. I mean, there is some seriousness here. And obviously UW is taking it very serious with the measures they've taken recently as well. But yes, in terms of the case counts, we're not, we're not trending in the right direction as a county. We're certainly not alone. That's happening all over. The schools are reopening both at the K-12 and the higher ed level. So yeah, since August 24th, when we last met, we started the school year. Hooray. Got off to a good start. Our administrative team saw the feedback from students and parents, which we can hear more about later. This word pivot is becoming a very catchy word, so we pivoted again with the Emergency Order Number Nine and headaches to that on the first of September. And since then as well, we have students district-wide that have now started to access our in-person student support hubs. And you'll see a little bit more of that later as well. And then, and then last Thursday, just as the new snapshot came out from the county that showed our case counts had doubled on average, the State Supreme Court struck down the order. Seemed to be odd timing, but as I've said to a few people, the Supreme Court doesn't really care about the case counts. They care about the law and in their view, this was an overreach by public health. I would say sources would tend to indicate that the injunction is going to turn into, it's just going to be overturned. And what we'll have from the county, kind of flashback to when the state safer at home order was overturned, is we will have guidance from the county, not hard rules because for the most part they've become unenforceable, at least this piece of the rules, with 312 students. So the injunction does only apply to 312 students being able to participate. The other provisions of Order Number Nine in terms of group size, cohorting, stacking groups, those still apply. Had a conversation with our property insurance carrier today because that was advice out of legal last week is you need to talk to your property insurance to make sure that if you start bringing in more kids, you're not exposing yourself to excessive liability. That conversation went well. Basically the advice is so long as we follow the guidance from public health, so with relation to group size, to cohorting, to masking, things like that. But as long as we're following that guidance, we're not exposing ourselves to excessive liability. I think a couple of key things for all of us, myself included, so I keep telling myself, but for the board and the admin, if and when we have a positive case in the district, it's really important to go back to those procedures and things that we approved way back in the summer, talking about what that process looks like, talking about what communication looks like. And one of the things that the property insurance carrier just said is a cautionary tale to inform your board is in other districts that he works with, as soon as the media hears that there's a positive case in a district, they are flocking to everyone to try to get a statement, including board members and other administrators. So his advice is whatever your normal process is, if it's your board president speaks on behalf of the board, the superintendent speaks on behalf of the administration, then don't forget your normal procedures because when this happens, it's going to be quick and they're going to be looking for a statement. And he said some of the other districts have kind of had to backtrack a little bit because someone then says something. It's like, whoa, slow down a little bit. So that was just good advice from our property insurance carrier today as well. So all of this being said, and as we've talked about it administratively since the injunction last week, I think it's important to go back to the fact that what the school board approved on July 27th was before we had the emergency order from Dane County. And as we talked about focusing on safety and we talked about avoiding this yo-yo effect where you're in person, you're online, you're in person, you're online and you really don't know when your case is going to be and when you're suddenly going to have to send everybody home. So I think that all still applies, that that hasn't changed. And I don't think for minors, you know, I got a couple of calls from the media last week like, oh, are you going to bring all your students in? And I was like, I don't know why we would because number one, the health situation is worse than it was a month ago. And number two, that wasn't our plan before the order. So and then just sticking to that and kind of doing this in a thoughtful, safety-conscious way as you'll hear in the rest of the presentation will continue to be our focus. Dr. Green, interesting enough, is Hill. Just talking about this emergency order and initially when there was the amendment, that did allow for students in any grade, including three through 12, to access in-person instruction if they had an IEP or a 504 plan at the 312 level. And as you noted on the bottom, initially we had all 10 students at each location who are receiving those services. And then just a reminder on our student support hubs, just what they are and kind of what the purpose is. And then you can have an idea that as of now, kind of where the numbers are of students that are accessing the student support hubs. So 20 at Black Earth and then 10 each at Maiso in middle school, high school. Mr. Moore?
Ready? Okay, so after the first day of school, I've with us talking to Jordan. Asked how it went because at the time I was the only one that had kids in the building. So we were just talking about that. He said it's probably a good idea that by the week we get some feedback from families. And I said, sounds good to me. So one of the people, Liz, was able to throw something together in about three minutes or so that we were ready to send out early thereafter. So between the three buildings, these themes were kind of identified as we felt maybe the most crucial pieces. So so each parent, pre-K 12, got sent a survey, the same question. So I had 46 responses, so you can see kind of how it broke down as far as how people feel accessing Schoology with Zoom and things like that, if they agree or were not about the use of that. And so engagement and relationships, and then use of Schoology and then a schedule. And then kind of more importantly, is it, is it a better model than we had last spring? And so that was how my parent feedback was returned. And then, if we could, I asked my students the five questions, kind of based on the parent questions. And so on the left, you can see their rating scale they were given. Five being the happiest face and one being that angry is what we want. So the first question I asked, you know, already decided to be back at school. So a majority are saying that yes, for the most part they are, which is good to see. I just asked the graders so I could get a breakdown there at grade level. And then the third question there again is rating scale, you know, and it's important that our staff are beginning to build a relationship, even though it is online and they may only see them a couple of minutes at the degree, but at least, you know, they can start to get to know each other. So that's how most kiddos felt like, yep, their teacher was doing that, which was fantastic.
Just real quick, sorry.
Yep.
If you don't live and breathe, surveys maybe don't like, what's good? Typically what you hear is 70 to 80% on a survey, depending what the survey is. If you're above 70%, being in that like upper half, that's, that's good. Other surveys, they may say that number is closer to 80%. But I mean, yes, 80% is a general rule. Like if you're above 80% agreeing in a positive way, then that's, that's very good data, if you will. So I just, I want to interject so we have some context. And then so looking at this one, with it being, well, I mean, it's 100% is in the top three and it's over 95% in the two highest response areas. So I'm not taking this for gospel, but at the same time, I just, I think you'll see some general themes that tend to show a relatively favorable response from our students and their parents.
Yep. Then the fourth one, the last two are about technology. So I'm able to get onto Schoology. Again, a majority of people had no issue with that. Students, I knew. And the final one, their Chromebook and iPad is working and it's easy to use. Again, the majority said yes, had a more mixed reaction. And yes, I, that is pretty accurate given our first week. We just had some technology glitches and like Rachel alluded to in her first week. Was spent trading out devices and trying to troubleshoot. So it wasn't surprising to see that most people had good, you know, a good working devices. But there were also some issues and something we worked through them. But again, it was important to get a student opinion in this too. So that's what we shot for with that.
We can see Maiso responded the same to similar questions. We had 47 students that returned their survey. First question they asked about their ability to access Schoology and Zoom. And 100%, the percentage there is students that answered agree or strongly agree. So all 47 students that responded to the survey were able to access what they needed across the board. Student engagement, you can see numbers are just across the board. They look pretty good. I put the number of students that answered neutral or no opinion in there just as a, so the students that had an issue, it was, was very minimal. I had one or two responses, you know, in the entire survey that disliked or disagreed with the question sheet. So the numbers are just really positive and very, very excited to see their responses coming across. And the parents, similar responses with the parents. Parents that responded didn't have a ton of response from parents, had 13 responses. Part of that is, you know, I think our families, I don't know if they could just choose one building when they took the survey so they maybe, but out of the 13 responses, things do have the numbers. So again, all very positive on what we're doing with the kids online at Maiso School.
So at the middle school, high school, we also did two surveys. We did a student survey. We had 64 middle school students and 121 high school students respond. So in the 90s, we're accessing Schoology and Zoom with ease. Middle school students are reporting they're a little more engaged than high school students. Having a high school students, I understand. That's all. Saying teachers are establishing relationship high marks in the 90s. Most of the students liked the schedule, again, middle school students a little more than high school students. And better than spring. So 80% saying they like it better than it was organized for spring. And then I did a parent survey and I had 61 middle school parents and 70 high school parents respond. Middle school parents were a little lower with accessing Schoology and Zoom with ease. High school parents a little higher, 87%. Both sets of parents reporting that their students are engaged, high 80s, low 90s. Kudos to our teachers since they're working hard to establish relationships and parents are seeing that also. Parents really like the schedule, probably more so than their children. And we are in the 93% for better than spring for the middle school and 83% for the high school.
Thank you. Just some updates.
Can I say something?
Oh, sorry, Mark.
I was just going to say what I think can't be lost either is the notion that we are still facing so many challenges every day. This is even amongst this. we are still facing so many challenges every day, and this is even amongst this challenging, you know, nature where parents are working from home and trying to help the kids. And we had a 20-minute meltdown at my house today with Chromebook touchpad not driving and dr-, you know, and it's like, at the end of the day, do I feel super exuberant about a five on a survey and a happy face? Like, no. But the survey indicated my feel, because I think people are now recognizing the effort and the appreciation, and that we're in this together, we're making the best of it. And so I think those numbers should even be on a different scale, knowing very well that everybody is at home digging deep and, you know, like, challenging every day. So I just thought that was an important perspective that there's high scores even amongst the world that we're living in.
Thank you. Any other, yeah, good pause point, any other questions or anything regarding kind of the surveys and that information? So food service, an important change for USDA, and this, it was today. And this went out through the parent message last week. This is going back to what we had had last spring. Initially, we were not going to have this availability, but the USDA made a change. So any students, or children, I should say, not even just students, 18 and under in our community can access these meals. They set through December 31st or until the available funding runs out. The second point there, I cannot stress enough, participation in this offer supports our food service program, which obviously supports our district. So you don't have to be on free or reduced or anything else to participate. And by participating, you are not taking away from someone that is on free or reduced. So please, once again, spread the word. We've been posted online, we've sent messages to parents. I do know our participation increased exponentially this week, which is good. But I can't stress that enough, that this is actually a good thing for the district because our reimbursements are obviously based on the quantities of what we distribute. So that's an important note to remember. And then the, as of now, the times for the curbside pickup remain the same. And then ordering through the rule of form remains the same as well. But that was a huge change, and to Rebecca's credit, she took a couple of days and work with, Cheryl and worked with their staff to get organized, make sure that we could launch this in a successful fashion. And I didn't hear how things went today, but I didn't hear that they went terrible either, so I'm going to call that okay.
They were crazy.
They were crazy. So we've always kind of finished up with what's next. Ongoing, we talked about this once again at the beginning, the feedback cycles. Just crucial to give feedback, whether it's formal or informal, but obviously that survey was relatively formal. And we'll continue to do things like that as the situation evolves. This week is actually our third week already, and we talked way back in July. We talked about assessing the first two weeks, what our areas for growth, and are there possible expansion opportunities for in-person? So whether that's some of our youngest learners who maybe have never physically been in a building before, do we have opportunities to bring in some more of those children? An example at the middle school, high school, particularly the high school level, some of the more hands-on activities. Do we have chances to bring kids in for some lab times in a science class or the tech ed and then the consumer sciences? So Liz and her staff are working on those as well. So really, as we talked about it, this week will kind of be a planning and assessment week. And if you think those are opportunities that we can do and do responsibly, then we would love to potentially start to expand in some of those areas as early as next week. So that's really the way this is going. Obviously, our local data is crucial. When I say local, I mean like, yes, right here. Are we safe? Are our students healthy? Are our staff healthy? Is this something we can do within our school district? And then this week, Wednesday, we have an afternoon in-service, which we decided that we still want to go forward because we don't want to lose our focus on staff development and learning. And the buildings are going to focus on school improvement, finding goals, but then infusing that into our present delivery, and what does that look like in this enhanced timeline environment? So just kind of this continuous process of assessment. That don't mean like testing assessment, I mean assessment of everything that's happening around us, what the latest order is, what the latest legal opinion is, what's happening locally within our own school district, and then what makes sense and what we think we can do safely and effectively. Any questions? I put a note on our agenda because we have an operational planning meeting tomorrow. Is, yeah, as fast as things go, by the time we get to our next board meeting, basically immediately after that, we're going to be into October. And the notion of assessing the first month, plus then looking at the public health situation, both at the county and the local level, and then looking at November. Because when we initially brought this forward, we talked about the first quarter, which is in early November. So it's again, exciting again, and we'll have to see where it's at and obviously make, you know, the best decision possible to support it forward.
That decision, when it comes up towards November, where do we have to make that decision vis a vis the election? Or like, we have to make that decision about where we are? I mean, I know that's nebulous to say because we have no idea, but Americans are necessarily going to be at that point.
Yeah, well, I think, based on the way the calendar sets up, we're going to want to probably bring a proposal of some sort to the first meeting in October, at the very least, which I think is around 13, 12, okay? Because in terms of parents and planning, that goes right back to where we were in July. It's like, we've got to give parents some lead time here, especially if it's going to change. So I think that first meeting in October, we probably are going to want to have a decent idea of what things are going to look like for November. And even, I guess, yeah, we know, we may end up having to schedule another meeting in October, quite frankly, because if we wait until the second meeting in the month, that's just going to be too late, especially if there's going to be any changes. But yes, it's going to have to come before the election, to answer the question.
We're, we're still bound by those numbers that the county put out, though, as advice, right? Where that to have a certain number of positive cases and...
Well, I mean, they have the reopening metrics, but with this injunction, the 312 guidance that you can't have kids physically in the building went out the window. So now we're still beholden to like the 15 in the room. I mean, that's a piece of that guidance, you couldn't have more than 15 students in that classroom. So let's say things are phenomenal, everyone's healthy and feeling good. Even if that's the case, if we were to say, "We're bringing them all back," that, that still is going to be in place, the 15. That did not get struck down, and I don't see the county giving up on that. And the county would have disappointed that the other things got struck down. Any other questions? Adam, anything else to chime in on that? All right.
Carol, then we can move on to our next focus point, which is 6.4, facilities and transportation, with you is our chair.
Well, I look forward to hearing the updates on the traffic study. I do with, you know, I appreciate everybody last week, and our last meeting was tough. I wish there was a way we can make everybody happy, but that's just not how we live in. So I guess, we'll just go forward and hope.
Thanks, Mike. So Jim's here from Performance Services, and he has some information regarding the traffic study. So just to keep us moving here, I'm going to turn it over to Jim and let him take it away from here.
Okay. Thanks, Sherrod. Hello, everyone, again. We have the traffic study printed out for you. You'll also get digital copies, or send them to you. So I'm just going to hit the highlights of the study, if we think it's beneficial. If we think it's beneficial to dig a little deeper, we can bring in the engineering firm that did this, and we can really dig into it. But just for tonight, on sake of time, I'm just going to go over kind of what the highlights and what we found, a little bit with Jordan. So we partnered with KL Engineering. They're a transportation and traffic engineering firm, this is what they do. I think they did a good job putting together this presentation. In the beginning, they just go over the background, what you have now, the streets, the exits, the entrances. They did a traffic speed analysis, which said, they gave the average speeds that go in front of your school. So coming from the north, the average speed was 43 miles an hour. Coming from the south, heading north, it went up to 56 miles an hour. Those little faster going that way. So just information that you can have there. They talked about the previous improvements that was done on Highway 14 in 2014, the consolidation of the two exits from the school to one exit and entrance, the longer turning lanes on the north and southbound turns, the median that was added in between there. They also talk about the flashing lights and the speed zone as well. So these things worked. These improvements that they made actually worked. Since 2014, there have only been two accidents in front of the school. And these two accidents happened on the same day, right around the same time during a snowstorm. And what happened was cars, two cars, not at the same, exact same time, were coming from the north, heading south, were going to turn into the school, and they slipped on the snow and ice and skidded into an waiting car that was waiting to get out. So that happened twice. So those, since 2014, those have been the only accidents outside the school. So it kind of showed that the improvements that went on in 2014 helped. Their recommendation that there are no modifications to Highway 14, which is good news. They thought in the future, they may have a sign that said, if it's necessary, a radar four speed sign that said, "You're going at 50 miles an hour, 52." And if the school district thinks that's important, now we can go in and put that in now. They didn't think it was necessary right at all. They talked about how many new trips would be generated by adding the two elementaries to this section. And the rest of the study talks about inside the school boundary. So improving pickup drop-off, weather would help to do staggered starts, one-way exits out the south, stop and drops. So PSI, our engineering team and architect teams talked with KL. And we came up with, they had some ideas in here, we came up with four new designs for pickup, drop-off, exiting bus zones. They're in design right now, all completely different designs, which we think will work. So we want to bring those to the board, to the administration team, to the principals, the teachers, some public members, and to the bus company. And say, "What's best for the school? What would be best for drop-off, pickup, things like that?" So we have four new designs that we'll bring to you shortly. We've already put money in the budget, when we budgeted this per site, so the district's not going to get implicated. Surprise bill, I don't know what's going to cost to do all this, that was already expected. So again, I don't want to get too much in depth, but we can if you want. This will be up on the website, this will be emailed to you, I'll send it to Jordan. If you have any questions right now, I can, I'll be happy to answer them. Or like I said, KL is happy to come in and present in front of you, if that's something that you're interested in.
So I'm kind of curious, and you may not know this answer, it may, would have never come out, but I'm curious, regionally or even in the state, how many other school districts have this kind of issue? Or even if you're talking the average mile per hour is upwards of 50, call it even, you know, so the average is, okay, 49, 40, but call it 50, have that kind of traffic going by their elementary school? Like, are there any other cases out there to compare us to?
Yeah, I can, I can look into that, I know a few. And I'll, I'll see what they've done. I know the longer turning lanes have helped them, and that's what they did. And a big flash, you guys have a flashing light in front and, I don't know which way you're going, on each way in front.
Yeah.
So we have it right in front of the school as well. The highway is the tricky part, I've swollen down to a 25. But I'll, I'll do some research for you.
So Jim mentioned that we went through this today. He's actually been in the district since about 1:45 today, so thanks, Jim.
It's like a regular.
We did go through this this afternoon together. You know, just, obviously, all of us, whether it's any one of the hats we wear, educator, parent, grant holder, board member, human, care a great deal about, you know, safety and things like that, do not want to put people in a situation of undue risk. And it was, it was interesting for me to look at the data, and Jim shared some of the highlights of the data. Obviously, I think once you look at this in a little more detail, you may have questions. So please send those to myself and Jim, and we'll, you know, obviously, I'm not going to answer those questions because I didn't do the study, and I'm not going to be the guy that's engineering the solutions either. But some of the things that, yeah, stuck out for me is the work that was done in 2014, based on the data, has had a positive impact in terms of, you know, crashes at the school driveway, the severity of those crashes and things like that, it has amazing difference. The fact that they involve weather related, I think that's, that's encouraging news. If it would not have come out that way, that would have been discouraging. And then the other piece that's important for us to consider, Jim talked about it a little bit, is a lot of the solutions or ideas can be things that are done on school grounds. So what does the traffic flow look like in the parking lot? Where are the drop-off areas, where are the pickup areas? And then something that seemingly is so simple as staggered start and end times. So in this document, you know, we had talked about it, even just proposing, and I'm going to find it, so I stated exactly correct. We'll find it, it's on page seven. We talked about a proposed start and end time. So for the elementary school, a 7:50 to a 2:50, and middle high school from 8:10 to 3:34. So even with those staggered times in the morning, having a 20-minute in the afternoon, approximately 40 minutes, just to greatly decrease that congestion and traffic because the groups won't necessarily have to co-mingle as much. So even just solutions like that to try to lessen the impact of excessive vehicles coming in out of the parking lot. The other thing that's in here is, I mean, we, we just estimated that perhaps, you know, perhaps bussing would go up to approximately 85%. It's, it's right now at about 68%. That was just an approximation to accurately quantify that. I don't know how one would do that until you're actually in that situation because you may also run into some opportunities where there's neighbors, family members, carpooling, other things. I mean, some people, any of an elementary, parents that just have students in elementary, they drive their kids to school, irregardless of where it is, just because they want to be the one that drops them off and picks them up from school. Because I may have seen some of the comments that we're going to turn into 100% bussing district. I can't say that's not true, but I think I can. We, we don't, we don't have all of our kids, we have plenty of middle school and high school kids that are getting rides here right now or driving themselves. So to say we'd be 100% bussing district is just not accurate. And even for the elementary students, there's a number of their parents that like to drop them off at school the way it is. And we've already looked into the numbers that go right way. Even if we increased to approximately 85%... Even if we increased to approximately eighty-five percent of our students riding the bus, depending what solutions we looked at, the high end on an increased cost for transportation was fifty thousand dollars. Some of the solutions, there was no extra cost in part. So, I think that's another reported piece, you know, when you talk about what is the impact of this from a transportation standpoint. And we've already dealt with go right.
A part of this study, was it ever, and I know, this was done recently, so obviously, it's probably not an accurate representation of normal traffic flow, you know, everybody's going to work, but I'd be curious if they broke down, like, the number of cars passing during school hours. Now, granted, you know, whether that's, it would work, not, I mean, right, but I would be curious to know if it's a huge influx during the same time that we're gonna be having, you know, the school traffic, or if it's staggered a little bit, or, you know, when you kind of pool all those numbers in a given day, well, that's not quite giving a, a good picture of how much, you know, the traffic, traffic has been flows during the daily kind of commute, so.
Page two does have average annual daily numbers for twenty eighteen.
Right. But, you know, I would just be curious if there's an hour or two that's like, whoa, that's when everybody's driving by the school, or, you know, if it's pretty overdone here. Because, you know, that's, that's what people are gonna say, even if we say, look, the accidents are down, they're gonna say, yes, but look at the amount of traffic that, you know, goes by. So, there's some type of detail that could help us in any way, kind of, you know, elaborate on the findings, that would be helpful, but probably not given where we are because the cars driving are, you know, an accurate day-to-day, I'm sure, normal speed.
Well, what I take from this survey is, and I don't know about the Olson Road intersection because we didn't do the traffic study there, but this traffic study is saying the improvements they had to the front entrance are good. So, I guess my take on this is, at least for me, I'm gonna be telling my kids that if they're going to come and go from the school, they should be using the main entrance because that's been proven to be the safest intersection. And if I've gotten any complaints since the improvements, it's been from the Olson Road one where cars are waiting to turn left there, and cars are coming up behind them and almost running in. So, I guess, I think that.
They talked about that in the survey on how, if you try to use Olson Road as an exit point, the way it is right now, there'd be too much of a backup. Right? So, and there's ways that we can fix that. We have that in our design, whether it be that or whether that just be a bus exit.
So, I just want to mention something about the, the speed limit. Someone took me back to my driver ed days, which is many, many years ago, that the speed limit out here is fifty-five. It's a suggestion that it's a school zone and you go down to forty-five. So, when it talks on page thirteen about reducing the pulse of the speed limit, is that even an option?
I'm going to say no because I would have thought they would have done it already.
You thought what?
I would have thought they would have done it already.
Yeah, right.
That was the case.
But that was not new to me, and I thought, you know, that it was.
Well, that's what I always kind of thought, is those signs are, you know, a good PR, like, look, we did something, but it's suggestion, you know, it's like a force step, so.
We were a rural therapist of last week or week before, that students won't be allowed to park vehicles here if this building went that way. Not like those kinds of pod that they heard that. So, I just wanted to clarify it in public so we can make sure. I just, I'm surprised people are starting movements like that right now.
Well, we've actually had.
That's what I.
So, the report, and it's in here, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make sure once again, what is the number? It's like three hundred and fifteen stalls.
I know, that's what I would.
So, page four says, overall, there are a total of three hundred and fifteen parking stalls. So, if every staff member, which is about a hundred and thirty-five, that leaves us with a hundred and eighty?
I agree with you a hundred percent.
I'm just saying, so there's a hundred and eighty existing, plus they were gonna add additional? So, no, we clearly would not be in a position where we would tell students they cannot drive to school.
Right, there's no way we need to. But I'm watching where what rumors are flowing around out there already, so.
I've got some lakefront property, the Red Hawk subdivision, I'll sell them.
No, that could just be a simple math slide of how many stalls, how many are added, like, path that are on like.
I knew we were adding, so that's, that's what I was like.
So, even at present levels, that's very simple and serious response, if even at present levels, if every child that has their license drove to school and every faculty member drove to school, we would still basically have enough existing parking stalls for everyone. Because I don't know that we have a hundred and eighty kids in high school with their license.
Well, now, are we telling the staff they also should be getting in that front entrance? Is that, are we encouraging them at all?
What do you mean, James?
Well, I mean, yeah, versus Olson Road, because I know Olson Road might be a little bit of a shortcut, so I can zoom in there and park on that side of the school. But, I mean, we can tell them, look, we knew the front entrance is relatively safe. We did a study there. Olson Road, I mean, I don't want to say at your own risk, but there's certainly not the, the cautions have not been made to that intersection to make it safer, so.
Well, we certainly could, and I mean, I think obviously, there's definitely a lot of it, as to be, to be real, and this is where their classroom is, because as close as they can get to their classroom, even if they're gonna park. So, if that means they're gonna on Olson Road, so they're gonna park and head into the building and walk right in.
Well, that's gonna be different from Gary High. I mean, when we come back this way from Olson Road, the, the only way to get here, I mean, you go up to hit fourteen, it's not making any sense.
It may still cause more of an accident than you're trying to cross the road.
Yeah, if I'm actually going out with fourteen, I'd actually avoid it altogether.
Yeah.
But there's gonna be situations where people are coming from that way, I don't think that's true.
But mind you, there haven't been any reported accidents, and this is pretty, you know, so, you'd be hypothetical about a lot of things.
Oh, yeah.
The data proves a lot of things.
All right, does anybody have anything else as far as this is concerned?
It's nice to hear that, you know, that there only happened those two accidents, you know, I was kind of wondering how safe it is now after all of this. So, that was really an interesting bit to have, that we're kind of going into it already in a safe position.
Well, like I said, I've gotten more complaints about Olson Road since the, since the improvements have been made in the main entrance, so, that's all I can do.
Yeah, nice.
Thanks, Jim, for your work on this one. Appreciate it.
So, all we know that, see, you guys can get it electronically, and then like Jim said, we'll get it up under that, our, our tab on the website as well.
All right, does anybody have anything else as far as public or facilities and transportation is concerned? And then we'll move on to six point seven, which is public relations in our next focal point, with our, as our chair.
So, I've kind of been waiting all night on a lighter note to repeat a statement from a fellow second grade classmate, my daughter, when he was asked to share his answer on the virtual Zoom, and I'm working on my computer, and I hear, I was born ready! Oh, virtual Zoom, bless the teachers. But, yes, you're ready for communication, and we have a lot ahead of us, I think as James mentioned, you know. We had a tough vote last week, and, you know, but we're on the M and B bus, and still have Jordan going forward, and it's kind of how we need to come together and discuss what that looks like, and where we go from here. And there's been a lot of ideas circulating and different stuff that, that we can do, and I think we just need to open it up and have a good dialogue about some ideas that we can participate as a group in, and what the communication is like going forward regarding the referendum.
All right. So, just like, we're gonna talk about some of our possible work, community-based outdoor listening sessions. I know Matt sent me a text message about some outdoor, kind of, I guess, neighborhood type involvement, or.
I was thinking the parks or the picnic shelters. I actually drove around the day before, just kind of trying to think of, you know, between Mezzo and Black Earth, and then even Lake, Lake Mary, and that's maybe picnic shelter, and, and maybe that's kind of far-fetched to meet there, but, you know, I think the park in Black Earth has a lot of space there and shelter. I think at Mezzo, the promenade or promenade or whatever.
Yeah. Promenade, yeah. 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 Seating.
Might be kind of better than not picnic shelters in, in the park, just inside the size, or maybe parking and stuff, but.
So, just to clarify, as Jordan hears you, so, as we try to promote the, or I guess you could say, try to promote the referendum, or individual board members can do kind of things on their own as far as getting on, setting up public listening sessions and all that, that's all incorrect?
Yeah, I think legally, I mean, if you're gonna do something, and this is just, this would be advice, I mean, if you're gonna do something in terms of like a listening session, you're probably gonna wanna collaborate with the board and make sure you're on the same page. But I mean, I guess I'll just say, if it's general advocacy, because as board members, you can advocate a position, unlike administratively, what we cannot do. If it's just general advocacy, that's, that's up to you as residents and voters. But, yeah, if there's gonna be something a bit more formal where there's, we're inviting people to come and to ask questions, or at least to pick up some literature or something else, I would just say that one probably just for cohesion and consistency, you're gonna wanna be on the same page in terms of what are those gonna look like, where are they gonna be? But that's, yeah, it's certainly something that, that you could do in that setting. And obviously, we can't control the circumstances because if the circumstances were different, we would be hosting events like this in this room and bringing in large groups of people and having them look at things, and, but, we just went to public health and we can see those are things that are kind of off the table right now. So, running a couple of virtual events, one already next week, yes, next week. One already next week, and then, you know, things on social media, and things to the newspaper, and already, those are kind of the more, I'll say, district, whatever, foster types of communication pieces. But, yes, in terms of the board, you could certainly, you know, collaborate with each other and, and do things like that.
Well, and kind of in my mind, I feel like at this point, the really, the notion of just informing and educating people is at the forefront, because I still have people coming up saying, why are you spending so much on the gym, that new fitness facility? Like, well, that's not on, you know, so it's just very, an easy way for us to stick with, you know, the fundamentals and the facts and to exchange in that if people have questions. And, you know, individually, we can advocate in different ways, like through a editorial in the paper. Someone's interested in that. I talked to Joe about that, so that's certainly an option. But I think as a group, or even, you know, couples here and there, doing these like outdoor listening sessions would just be a good kind of PR statement, too, that we are an engaged group and, you know, we're not scared to be engaged with, you know, the community, and we, we love our people, we wanna see them and, and answer questions. And at, at the root of it, really just make sure people are voting based on the correct information. And so, when you kind of look at all the possibilities we have, we kind of rise at an outdoor, you know, listening session, I guess. But we also, you know, might have some signs that if people are willing to kind of go around and, you know, aren't, aren't gonna be specifically advocating yes or no, they're just gonna be, place logo and vote, you know, because we want everybody to get out and vote. So, there'd be options for people to spread the word on the signs. But if anybody else has any ideas, or, you know, kind of this notion that now we, we are together in this, and so, how do we go forward in that movement?
Speaking of signs, our Jim Trader actually offered to help us get some signs.
I'm not exactly sure in what capacity, but.
Awesome. I would know him. Perfect, okay.
The other thing, absentee ballots were gonna be held up, but that all went through today, so they're gonna be on time. So, that makes our time comes, but being up there, maybe even more of some of the, maybe, what I was referring to as purple people that don't have kids in school anymore, probably gonna have absentee ballot early. So, some of the rumors that Mike brought up about certain things, or, you know, the gym, or, you know, things that aren't actually on there or that we have covered, I think, opportunity to educate them on that those things aren't actually a, an issue or a problem. I have a lot of time myself, and obviously, I worked for this, so I can feel like I'm all in in my need to own it.
But I think that's a good, a good point, though, is that even in voting, however we felt, we all agree that we're in this together. So, I think that that's just a necessary conversation to have, is how do we proceed as a unified front in supporting this in the school?
I like the idea of doing some park sessions. I mean, I like it with, you know, just a couple, but I think, you know, presenting us as a board, I would love to see us all go up to the shelter and sit up there and.
Yeah, but are we gonna be a quorum then? That's the question.
Well, we have to post it.
We post it.
Okay.
Just like you leave for any other workshop, and you'll just say that it was, you know, a quorum, maybe present, but no action will be taken.
Okay.
You know, and at the very least, if you have some, like, spare literature, bumper stickers, I mean, like, bottom line for me, like, this is the time to celebrate the district and who we are, and this is just an extension of that. And so, if there is, if we can use this as a way to bring some positivity about the school and the district, and what we're hoping that this referendum will bring, like, that's a part of it, too, so.
So, for the listening sessions, is there some sort of canned presentation first and then open questions, or what do you think?
For the online pieces, is that what you're asking?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so, somewhat similar to what we had done in June. But at this point, obviously, it's a little more focused because at that point, we're still talking about a variety of options and things like that. So, there will be some presentation, like here, and some of these questions that we're seeing, maybe not parking one, but others that we're seeing on a bit more frequent basis from people, would be questions that we would just directly address in those. And then, yes, there would be a portion, once we were through kind of the presentation portion, what questions do you have? What can you try to answer, things like that.
So, I think I mentioned to you, you can, you have a projection system in base camp, we can probably fit fifteen, twenty people in the back, so if you wanna use it, it's there.
Who's, who's the main leader on that discussion?
Probably similar to what we did in the past, myself and Jim.
Okay.
So, I, I just want to clarify something, though. So, let's say that, that Mike set something up in Black Earth, and he's like, I'm gonna have this outdoor listening session, and he's initiating all of that. We just have to be careful, we don't have more than four board members, or four board members or more show up there because that's technically a quorum. He hasn't really announced it or anything like that, right?
Well, that's what I said before, if you're gonna do these things, that's why I would advise communicating sort of.
Well, we're thinking of maybe June is like a Google sign up. If there are some nights that we're of like putting in our name, we don't have to talk about here, but necessarily, but if there are certain nights that are free, you know, put your name on the Google Doc, and then we can kind of know which nights are quantity or whatever. But I agree with Cindy, I think at least one, one night even would be super cool, if we can all show up somewhere.
Because I think the part that's gonna seem like the virtual sessions is, you know, in the past, we would go to Black Earth and we'd go to Mezzo, and we'd invite the public in, and, you know, the board would be there, and we all could talk, and it was a presentation, and I think it was just a very different feeling, where we're not gonna get that this time. And so, I think having us all together in a public setting of some sort would just be a really neat idea.
Yeah, just don't be afraid to ask questions, because I've never done this before, where we're kind of in this situation. And actually, the district hasn't done, done something like this for so many years, so you'd have a hard time finding anybody that would be an expert in exactly what this looks like. So, just ask questions if you are exactly sure. All right, so who's gonna do the Google thing? You guys are kind of in charge of, from the Google calendar out, and then we'll sign up.
And I guess I'll just mention, I had a good talk with Joe from the newspaper, and he kind of outlined everything that is allowed and kind of how many articles where and when to. And he kinda outlined everything, um, that is allowed and kinda how many articles where and when kind of the deal. So, I think we have a good organized plan, um, about getting information and material in all channels of media, especially social media, but also the newspaper, as we found out, a lot of our community, community members still, um, go to the paper for that. So, I think we have a good plan, um, in place as far as trying to inundate people with enough information and education on, um, the facts.
Alright, excellent. Anybody have any other questions or comments or concerns?
So, Facebook is very active.
Yeah.
So, is there anything we can do to, um, just, and it, it's very emotional. And now, um, they're, they're posting up, you know, graduating classes from Mezzo maybe and stuff like that. So, is there anything we can put out ourselves? That's, it's just very challenging, I think, to counteract that, the emotional part of it.
You know, my initial reaction, because I, I will have to say, I spent a couple hours the other day reading through the individual amendments, going back to the eighteen hundreds from Mayanian. And what like triggered in my mind is this like whole notion of people holding on to history. And I have a history book, I love it, but yet, you like get caught up in a structure, when people are so keen on a structure, but yet, do people even know the Battle of Wisconsin Heights? Do they even know? You know, or are they reading historical documents from the Historical Society's website? Uh, you know, so, to me, it's like, it's a whole bigger thing. If you're really approaching it from a sentimental value of history, it's like, do you really know the history? And history is carried on in so many different ways than just the site. And so, that was my only, like, kind of, you know, play devil's advocate, even with myself, because I of course have history and familiarity, you know. But it's like, there are other ways to carry on the specialness and the history other than just a site.
I, I think, when I think of the group that he's in here, it's the purple.
Yeah.
Well, and I guess what I would say is, I think, and the best approach for that would be not to try to contradict something that's already said in there, just simply make sure that you say on there, "Hey, we have a listening session set up that we're gonna put, you know, that we're gonna host on this date. If you would like to hear it directly from the board, then this way, you know, please make yourself available." And if we post that on these threads that are coming out, hopefully then we can, you know, have them show up and we can answer their questions directly.
Well, and even surprisingly, like how Black Earth has evolved from its initial, I mean, evolution is just a part, right? A part of everything. And you don't lose sight of the original nature of the Black Earth in elementary school. There's pictures in the Historical Society for that reason, but it's not in its current state that it was. It's evolved over time and expanded and looks entirely different. And so, I, you know, I don't fault those people for having those kind of emotional attachments, if I to share in that. But at the same time, progress and evolution, you know, happen in, in different ways and... I mean, not necessarily debate, I'm not in the area.
Yeah, no, I think, Mary Beth, in my perspective, emotion is not something we're gonna, we're gonna get into. Contest on emotion or those things, but just the facts and here's, here's why this is being discussed. Here's what we believe the benefits would be to doing this. And, yeah, the emotional piece, we have, we have no rebuttal for that.
No.
Because that's, that's reality for them and that's, that's just the way it is.
Alright, anybody have anything else they wanna talk about as far as the public relations portion?
Just say the timeline on getting together, like what such, when we wanna do these sessions. We should stay on that pretty hard to get that settled, I think, so that we can get it posted and do everything, you know, like the way we should be doing it. But also, just because absentee ballots are going out, I think that answers some of these questions. I think it's gonna be a big absentee ballot year again.
Do you want, do you have a goal in mind for the first one, or...
I mean, I could do most early this week, um, myself, because I just have that schedule right now. I just have to have, like, I was on a busy list in around, not absentee, so I'm, uh, but I mean, I could do most early this week, but I don't know how long the posting has to be out or how far, why the postings have to be...
We got a quorum, um, yeah, we wanna have that posted, you know, very, I think that legal is twenty-four hours, but typically, we did kinda post it just for twenty-four hours, but... I think realistically, probably next week maybe. I mean, another, um, online event is, is next Wednesday.
I don't know.
That would make sense, whether it was before or after. The other nice piece that we'll try to do in the next, let's say, three to four weeks is, hopefully the weather is better. Granted, last week was terrible, but typically, you're still holding on to some decent weather right now. We get into October and all of a sudden, things get real dicey, depending on the year.
Well, the promenade's pretty much under, uh, and, and better at Park and Black Earth, and, I mean, they're a shelter. They've got plenty of people on there.
Yeah, it's just about the turnout. If it's like last week, you're gonna have to be diehard to show up and walk outside for half an hour sitting with something on a referendum, it's fifty degrees and rainfall. If it's seventy, you're a little more apt to show up and walk in and out. I'll listen for a while.
So, would you like to post your dates and have us commit within the next few days? Is that kinda what you're thinking?
Sure, I can do, I mean, if we're doing it as an announcement of the order, I can just send it to everybody already, but...
So, just that you guys can kinda keep it on your emails or... Is there an email or text message for both?
I can just send it on an email.
Okay. So, just that you guys can watch your emails in the next few days and try to respond back in a timely manner, just so we can kinda get it all set up and make sure we're all, I guess I could say legitimate and...
And now, is that something that has to be shared independently of the district?
In what sense, Barb?
Uh, you know, like can, can the white say, "Hey, come chat with us," or do you have to go?
We can do that.
So, I think what Jordan was saying is, if, if four or more people sign up, then you are pretty much required. If there's only gonna be just a couple of board members doing something on their own, then maybe not. But I think that's where we're kind of, we wanna see who commits all the, that shot.
Yeah, I mean, if we're gonna, there's potential for a forum, that needs to be posted.
And then...
Right.
But no, in terms of something like this...
That would be your primary.
No, yeah, that, that's fine.
Or I guess if you post something and three people are there and a fourth person shows up, you just have to say, "Hey, listen, you make a quorum, sorry, you're gonna have to go home," and that's fine.
I mean, to get attendance there, we should be posting it. Is the posting it anyway, because we want people to come, does that qualify as posting it as an... Because I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, there's, uh, I get an email at the post office, there's a poster board there, there's the outside the library, I don't know. You know, as long as our, as long as they're posted officially through the usual ways, we can also post it in other ways. Is that true?
Yep.
Okay.
And I guess we should mention number three up there. Um, if anybody has had any communication with community members who have been in support of the auditorium or any, um, feedback, um, from any, or one way or the other.
I just have a, a crazy idea. You know, you know, it's something that, you know, we need to look forward to the future, that's where we're at right now. And, you know, it's something that we do have a pretty cool company in our back pocket. Is it something that somebody has a contact with DC? You know, could they create a tip and they create a state-of-the-art facility that they could also use that showcases all of their awesome stuff? And, you know, it becomes a community event or community theater or something like that? Is there, um, you know, just kinda, I guess what I, I'm saying though is just keep that communication going out there, because it is something that I think we all want and obviously, the community wants it as well. And, um, was just an idea, is that something that we could look into or could explore?
Well, Barb's been mentioning that for a while, but I think, I think part of the reason why I, I kinda in my head was voted the way that I did at the last meeting was, if, if we can go in November and get our, our K-12 site approved, that still leaves the window for April to put the auditorium on there. And Jim has already said, "It's not gonna screw up our, our construction plans or anything like that." So, there's still an opportunity there. And it's also an opportunity where it's just gonna be about the auditorium and promoting the auditorium and there's not gonna be any other confusion or any other strings tied to it. And so, I look at it as, hey, we can still make this happen. If the community wants it to happen, we can still make it happen. So, we just have to kinda keep that in mind and there's still, like you said, that partnership and...
Well, and the other thing too, is I thought, you know, if we are gonna look to them for a donation or a partnership, that takes time and it doesn't, you know, it's not gonna happen overnight too. Where now, if we start now, we could have that opportunity, where then we can have a stronger push for the, for the ability to grow it and have it and, um, we have that, that...
So, that's one thing that Jim and I talked about a little bit already. Um, and I did reach out to Light a few weeks ago as well about just the notion that, just because it's not a ballot in November, doesn't mean there can't be some foundational work. I mean, what's been shared thus far with an idea or a concept of the auditorium, it's like a fifty thousand foot view, but in terms of like what that would actually look like, you know, in terms of details and then even, yes, potential partnerships, or is it a community performing arts thing, which a lot of communities our size, that's the route they have to go to fund it? Those are other options that I think can, that ball can continue to roll with planning things that may make that a more palatable piece, depending on what that looks like. So, we've had some of those conversations already.
Yeah, I think it's not, it's not a crazy idea at all. And I think, um, similar to maybe like the future search that we did or some of these organized groups that keep have a few cohorts that are really passionate about it, that they establish a group, even if maybe a couple of us are, you know, on that, where it really is a collaborative effort. Um, and I just think that our focus has to be on passing this, because, you know, in my mind, clearly this is an extension of our operations and who we are. And if this fails, it creates a whole different dynamic and culture that we're dealing with, that you go from, you know, a lot over here to all suddenly, you know, where is this money coming from? You know, your shift in mindset of, or mindset of hope and positivity and this auditorium and community state, I mean, it's, it's a drastic change depending on the path we take. So, I think wholeheartedly, we need to focus on the nuts and bolts right now, but very well knowing that this is something that we support and that we would love to get the ball rolling. Um, so I don't think that's crazy at all.
I, I wrote a draft letter to the editor that basically focuses on the length of time since our last referendum passed and, uh, you know, the analogy that this is a second home and, you know, if your growth is going on three decades old and your HVACs are going on three decades old, that's why this has to go through and to not deal with those issues is to cost more money down the line. And that, I guess, was the focus of what I focused on. And that's kinda why, I mean, that was like the basis of why I voted for it, was I feel to defer those things, which are not, I, I mean, for lack of a better word, they're not sexy things to talk about HVACs and growth and things like, like it would be a stadium or an auditorium or something. But, but the honesty is, those things need to get dealt, dealt with. And if we delay those too long, that, that's gonna be more costly. So, I guess that's where, what I focused on with my letter to the editor.
I'm, I'm glad you said that though, because I was even looking through the facility study just to kind of grasp everything. And, and if somebody asked me, what are the first words out of my mouth, like what are the priorities? And it's like you start making that list of all of those things and it's like, those are ageable. Like those aren't things you and I or anybody normally talk about, um, updating and kind of the infrastructure phraseology is just one after another, after another, after another. And so, I think those are the type of things you have to inundate people with. It's like, listen, it is one after another and these are not fun, cool, glamorous, you know, things that we're putting in here.
I don't know, did you guys read, um, in the August thirty-first connection from Los B? There was a report that they printed or they published and it said, um, fifty-four, fifty-four percent of districts should replace two building systems in most schools. And it had to do with the HVAC system and all of the other things that we're exactly dealing with. So, I just thought it was kinda timely and that was kinda interesting.
Alright, well, great discussion. Anybody have anything else to add? Gary, you're pretty quiet over there.
No.
Yes, listening.
That was good.
Alright, well then, do you guys know anything else that you want to add to the public relations part of it? Guess we can move on. Agenda item number seven, District Business Finance, seven point one says, "Action to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one collective bargaining agreement with the Wisconsin Heights Federation of Teachers Act," to basically increase of one point... Any questions or discussion? Okay, we're gonna hear from Becky, so... Alright, we will call the vote on Mike.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. We are on the seven point two, "Action to approve the supplemental pay for the Wisconsin Heights Federation of Teachers for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year."
So.
Question, discussion?
Jordan, can you clarify, this is just the, like, the five year, ten year, there's no other supplemental pay at this time, correct? Like sometimes we'll do like...
So, good question. There is a little bit of other supplemental pay, um, because with the teachers group, um, still being a federation, by law, the base wage increase can only be CPI. So, because of that, uh, with the language that we have regarding the handbook, if CPI is not enough to cover the language in the handbook, then there is some supplemental pay that goes into those salaries as well.
How much is CPI now?
CPI was one point eight one percent.
Oh, that was one point...
So, that's, that's where that, so let's say that that pool of money at the one point eight one percent, but then to get teachers, what the handbook says they should get, there has to be a small number over here too, because that one point eight one percent pot doesn't quite cover that amount, if that makes sense. So, yes, most of it, if you look at the bottom of the attachment, uh, the years of service incentives was eleven thousand one hundred and fifty, and then the supplemental piece, um, was seven thousand five hundred and eight.
God, that's what I came from.
That answers your question with dollar amounts.
That, no, that was exactly what I was questioning, because I was like, how else does that go? I was wondering where the one point eight one comes from, like it's such a specific amount, isn't it?
Yeah, so that was CPI last year.
Okay.
Alright, any other question? Alright, ready, good, we'll call the vote. Mike.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Eight point one is future meeting dates. Anybody have any questions about any of them?
So, yeah, two meetings and then October twenty-six will be the annual meeting.
Alright. Another discussion, one that kinda had them behind, which is for...
I'll make an motion.
Okay, Mike.
Yes.
Cindy.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate, I appreciate all your input. Uh, this is not, these are crazy times and we need all of them, so...